Everybody we need.
You're right on time, Julie.
Judy, I would ask if the first item of business going involved, we're going to need the fire chief. Is he available?
Let me see if I can find him.
Okay, just make sure before we get started.
I'm not seeing his name on the list unless it's some under a different name.
I'll check. I know he's logging in, so let me just check with him real quick.
Okay, well, while you're doing that, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Manitou Springs City Council work session for October the 13th, 2020. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes, council members Judith Chandler.
Present.
John Shada. Julie Wolf. Susan Wilbrook.
Here.
Steve Bremner. Mayor Pro Tim Nancy Fortune. Present. Mayor John Graham.
Present. Great, thank you. Okay, well, our first discussion item tonight is a report on the incline fire by Chief John Forsett. So Judy, have we? Have we found the fire?
Denise is still on a phone call, I'm guessing with him.
Okay.
Hasn't popped up yet.
Okay, we'll stand by here.
He's logging on, so he'll be available in just a moment.
Sorry I'm late, folks.
No worries, chief, you've been a busy man.
So, um, I assume that you want me to talk a little bit about the fire tonight. Are you ready for that?
Yes, chief, if you are, whatever information you have to share, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, well, um, we'll talk about the incline fire. The incline fire happened on October 8th and, and, um, I guess before I start, I hope that Brian's on the call tonight so that Brian can also share some of his experience over the weekend too, because his folks as well as some other law enforcement agencies did a really heck of a job, so. Um, so, so for starters, let's go back just historically to just a couple of weeks ago when we all were at the budget retreat and I explained to council how emergency incident response works in and around the city and how it pertains to mutual aid agreements, memorandums of understanding and jurisdictional boundaries. We still did. So, so basically Thursday was a tremendous example of, of the cooperatorship that occurs among our community and our first responders. And partners of all types to include school districts and, and others, so. You'll remember that I was pretty adamant, slightly adamant about forcing any change in this environment. Especially since the question was brought up about charging for services that we provide outside of our jurisdiction. So you'll remember to you, I conveyed to you the needs of how we work together as being paramount to all of our agencies and our successes. So anyway, this weekend in a sense was, was a great example of showing how we get paid back for our minor efforts in a really major way. So, um, some initial facts about the fire on Thursday. It occurred on October 8th. The first call was received around 5:15 PM. At the same time, the fire department was also receiving a whole lot of private line calls right directly to the fire department. So the folks at the station actually had to jump on this before the alarms went out and firefighters were paid. So they were pulling out of the station when the pages came out. The, uh, the fire department operates with, um, other agencies in a, in a response plan. So within the city of Manitou Springs, mostly you'll only see our resources. Sometimes other resources are notified in an environment like that because of, because of the environment, because of it being in the forest land and, and in encroaching on other jurisdictions like El Paso County and the Forest Service. Our response plans include at least courtesy notifications to other folks, if not notifications for actual request of resources when, at the time of the alarm. So, um, in this particular case, the initial resources dispatched to the call was Manitou Springs Fire Department, the El Paso County Wildland Fire Crew. And then we had courtesy paging that went out to the Office of Emergency Management and the US Forest Service. So all those folks knew what was going on and thank goodness we had the county wildland fire team coming with us right away. So on our arrival and getting up into the, into the environment, we found the fire was located in a mature oak brush stand with some mixed pine. That, that oak brush was roughly 15 feet tall. We're at an elevation of 7,140 feet on a low to mid slope that was on an easterly aspect. It's scary stuff up there when you see these conditions, especially with the hot and dry weather we've had and the winds. Working in that environment in dense 15-foot tall oak brush is extremely dangerous, especially in this case because the overstory, meaning the brush itself wasn't burning, it was all of that litter and grass and sticks and the fuels understory that was burning. So to get to that fire, you have to cut away that oak brush in that environment. And what happens is that understory is burning and as it burns, it preheats those fuels above without consuming them so that the fire can actually reburn if a wind change occurs or something like that and it, it'll reburn right back onto those firefighters. So it was a dangerous attack that those folks made. Um, there was a homeless camp and I know a couple of you asked me the question at the budget retreat of what was my primary concern, my major worry about wildland fire and I conveyed to you at the budget retreat that it was homeless camps. So we didn't go anytime at all before that was proven to be true and it's still true. That, that homeless camp was roughly 15 by 30. It, it actually looked like a structure was consumed up there. If you were to take a, a single car garage, a lengthy single car garage and fill it with all kinds of stuff, bicycles, cooking appliances, heating appliances. Bongs, crack pipes. You name it, it was all there and it was a big pile of what looked like a structure fire had burned. In addition to the original paging that I talked about, we also paged when we knew it was a working fire Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control. And then we brought in the Emergency Incident Services. It's a rehab unit that provides food and water and, and other needs to our firefighters under rehab conditions. So lots of folks were, were coming right away. The thing that really worked out well for us was the time of day and the weather at the time of the fire. Had that fire occurred earlier in the day or the next day when we were under the red flag conditions, it would have been a totally different story. The fact that this started at 5:15 in the evening and temperatures were dropping. Relative humidities were slightly, slightly, so very slightly coming up. Gave us an opportunity to, to make a good initial attack on the fire. I also wanted to say that it was awesome to see early recognition of support from our city leadership. I saw Denise and Roy up there in the area of the incident command post and, and we talked several times and, and Denise conveyed to me the support that I had from the city to manage the resources we would need for this fire as it stood and, and yeah, as it would have been had it advanced and gotten worse throughout the day or the next day. So I appreciated that leadership being available to ensure that we could manage that fire as need be. So I would be remiss, obviously, if I didn't talk about the resources that were on that fire. Aside from Manitou Springs Fire Department, which the initial attack, and I'm going to go into the initial attack a little bit more in detail. We had seven personnel on that initial attack from the fire department. Of course Manitou Springs Police Department was there. El Paso County Sheriff's deputies were there. El Paso County Wildland Fire Crew, they responded with five personnel. Colorado Springs Fire Department, they, they provided us with 12 personnel, actually 13 on the first night and 12 the next day. So times two at the initial fire, they also provided us with their PIO which worked with the Forest Service PIO and the city's PIO Alex and the, between the three of them, they made a heck of a team. One heck of a team because their, their knowledge background and experience all came from, from different places. So they put together a really good resource for the public to keep them informed. Ambulance coverage right there at the fire was provided by American Medical Response. Crystal Park Fire Department provided a lookout force from Crystal Park, which there was no better place to have a lookout to keep an eye on our firefighters and provide for their safety. They also came into town while we were fighting that fire and they covered the town on the other calls because just because you have one incident going, doesn't mean that everything else stops. So Crystal Park and Green Mountain Falls Fire Department both responded to alarms within our city while we couldn't. The Pike San Isbell Forest Service brought over an engine and a module which consisted of seven personnel. The Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control brought down a BC who was a tremendous help for me when it came to considering resources and they brought down a 10-person crew that's called Tava that their resource that kind of does, they, they fight fire, number one, they fight fire really good, but in the off season and in downtimes, they, they work to build trails and provide fire mitigation. And some of the mitigation that you may know about or may not know about is they most recently have been cutting and limbing up trees along the water treatment plant road to improve that access up there. And that's just been done in the last month or so. So incredible folks from that group. The Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control also provided their multi-mission aircraft. Their aircraft, they have two over in the state. One of them's in California, but the one that was in the state on Friday not only flew over our fire, I, I say not only, I should say that we're the, we were the least of that. They had flown over the Cameron Fire and the Mullen Fire that's in Wyoming. And they came and flew over our fire as well and they provide us video as well as infrared coverage so that we can find those hotspots within the fire's perimeter and work on those to put those out. Um, Colorado Springs Utilities Wildland Fire Crew, they provided free personnel for hand crew. And then Fort Carson Fire Department provided a, uh, one of their battalion chiefs acts as, act as a safety officer for us within our command structure throughout the week. I talked about EIS Emergency Services, the rehab unit coming in. El Paso County Sheriff's Department provided us with their command vehicle. And they also provided us with a tactical dispatcher which, um, that's it's invaluable is what it is because they're right there with us. So whenever myself or any other command staff makes a resource request or has a need of weather or you name whatever that, that need is, that dispatcher sitting right there with us in our hip pocket, ready to make those, those efforts to answer our questions and get information for us. Manitou Springs School District, they had opened up to provide evacuation shelter for folks should we have evacuated. The Red Cross was notified. Monument Police Department assisted Manitou and I'll let Brian speak to those things. And, and there was just numerous other folks, individuals, and I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but I had folks that weren't necessarily tied to an agency that provided accountability and check-in and checkout of folks moving on the fire ground, a gentleman that operated as our plans chief. As I stated earlier, the PIO, so tons of folks helped us out with this. Those resources, like I said, they're invaluable. So some, some significant actions that happened on that fire early, there was great command presence. First, it started out with our paid staff Larry Mitchell, our paramedic lieutenant who, who provided for, uh, making sure resources were coming right off the bat. Then my deputy chief Josh Mall took command initially and started working on air resources and trying to establish plans for attack. And then through all of that, we established a really good organization, a good command organization and we were able to order resources locally. And I mean that locally, very early on and, and develop a plan and, and then deploy those resources as well. So the command presence was really good from the very get-go. Thing that was key in this whole thing was an aggressive initial attack. That was provided by Manitou Springs firefighters and the El Paso County Wildland Crew and then the Pike San Iswell Forest Service. Their, their engine and mod group that also joined into that fight. So we had some key performers up there for sure. Keith Buckmiller, he's my assistant chief. He was initially in charge of the crew that went up and they established an anchor up there real fast and started line around the fire. Ben Engelhardt, who is a, he's a well-known firefighter, wildland firefighter, has lots of experience, lots of certifications. And he acted as operations on that fire for me. And both on the initial attack and the second day with, with the extended attack and mop up. We have a young firefighter, Elizabeth Guest, who, yes, tremendous young lady who loves wildland fire and she deploys a whole lot. She was key on that and provided great leadership. She's becoming a great leader in wild, in, in wildland for us. Cindy Duncan, like I said, we were, we were in 15-foot tall oak brush. She ran a saw like a champ that night from what I understood. And it's not an easy environment to, to saw and make, make an opening for other folks to follow behind and dig line. So really proud of her. And then the next day Kyle Perkins really took it upon himself to get up early and start laying line from that fire down so that we could establish a water source up there in the fire for mop up. And we were able to do 100% mop up on that fire with water from Ruxton Creek, so. Those folks are invaluable. So some other key things that happened, we, we did put out pre-evacuation notices and we had triggers for those evacuations if need be. We figured we had roughly 260 primary residents at risk. And because of that, we, we put 500 block, 600 block of Ruxton Avenue on pre-evacuation. All of Fairview Avenue on pre-evacuation and all of Upper Crystal Park on pre-evacuation. Thankfully, we didn't have to, to use those and we never did get close to the trigger points that would have initiated true evacuations. We, we initially figured that we had quite a few values at risk. Obviously, the big fire is our, our city, three tenths of a mile away with tourism, but we also had the hydroelectric plant real, real nearby, the residence real, real, real nearby. And the Cog Railway, Cog Railway presents significant risk simply because of its value, number one, but also number two, the upper end of that is, does contain a lot of hazmat and diesel fuel because of their operations to maintain their fleet. So, so those were values at risk. A little further away, we had the water treatment plant, so. And not to mention our own watershed too, and Colorado Springs watershed through the Ruxton Canyon area. During the fire, we closed the incline bar trail and we closed down all access to Ruxton Avenue. With the exception of residents were allowed to come in. We had overnight Colorado Springs, you know, we talked about invaluable resources, Colorado Springs came in and they took night ops for us, meaning on the fire, 12 of their folks working on the ground and a, and a 13th who provided leadership for them, worked all night long and they did a tremendous, tremendous job of enhancing the line that we had put in. They widened our line and they made it like a highway in some places. It was incredible, the effort that they put in overnight, so I can't thank them enough. And then finally on Friday, super solid mop up work by numerous agencies that came to continue to enhance, enhance the line and, and establish that water source. They, they put in a water source from Ruxton Creek with a pump at Ruxton Creek up about halfway to the fire to another tank and from that tank they pumped it again, so they relayed that water source up to the fire. And on the fire, I can't tell you how many hose lines were around that. We had the main trunk line going in and several distributor lines going off of that, that, that they just constantly worked over that fire with water, so. And they, that, that started after the MMA flight went over and looked at the infrared. The infrared was already looking pretty good by about noon on Friday, so. What was significant about the pumping operation was lack of resources in the state. There was no way in the world that we were going to get air support on Thursday night. It, it just wasn't going to happen. First off, there were no resources available of the type that we needed. And the type that we could maybe do with would have come out of, I think the closest was out of Durango. By the time they did a, the two-hour flight time, getting on their ships and coming this way and then setting up operations and then being able to drop, it would have been dark, so we wouldn't have had anybody to fly at nighttime resource-wise. And then there weren't any resources for the next day, so the water was truly significant for us to establish locally. And it worked really, really good. It was, it was kind of confusing to maybe adjust as we made progress and planning, the two weren't necessarily jiving together because the progress was outrunning the planning. The planning was planning for the worst and the progress was for the best, so it was a good situation to not be in alignment, so. Um, there's a ton more I could talk about, but probably taking enough of your time. I learned a whole lot during this fire and a lot of folks out there just really did help us, so. That's about it.
Thank you, chief. Now I think maybe Denise, did I see you raise your hand?
Yeah, I just want to say I was up there and watching Chief Forsett in action was impressive. I was up there pretty much right after the calls came in and watched him take over and take charge and get everything in place very quickly. Didn't think twice and was just moving and for set, you have your camera off because I know you're, don't like to be recognized, but he just did amazing and all the partner agencies coming together very quickly. I do want to mention with Ruxton Creek, that water, we've been talking with CSU and they've been great. I don't think we're going to get charged for it because it is they've been a great partner through this and was willing to help in any way possible, so I also want to mention that.
Great, thank you. It seems reasonable that we should let Chief Churchill, Churchill make comments if he has something he'd like to inform us of. Judy? Bring the chief in, the police chief. Chief, I think you probably, of course, it's, yeah, so. You have the, you have the floor for comments?
Yeah, I, I hear John laughing in the background. Thank you, John, for inviting me to the meeting and I'm talking about John Forsett. We were ribbing each other earlier. He didn't like to be on camera. So I, I tell you what, my, this is my first wildland fire. I'm from a big city. I used to go to fire department fires and the house is on fire. You just, you cordon off a little area and that's that. On this occasion, I had just gotten home. I got a phone call from somebody that was on the hillside telling me there was, there was just a loud explosion. They see smoke. I called John Forsett and he was already running in the background and out of breath because he was getting to a car so he could get to this fire. I threw on some gear and I went down there and I, I tell you, my first thought when I got on scene there at the base of, of Bar Trail in Ruxton, looking up at that smoke was, we're not stopping this. And I started thinking about evacuations and how, and how big is this going to be? And shortly thereafter, I sat there in amazement as I watched Chief Forsett and his team and people and his relationships that he's established over the years come to bear on that fire. And when those firemen went up the hill with shovels and chainsaws and no water to put out a fire that I was standing down looking at, I thought, no way. We're going to have to start creating a plan here for evacuation and they got it stopped. So all the credit and the kudos go to the people that, you know, when firemen, they don't always have to work very hard, but when they do, they do. And it ain't, they dug a, what, a six-foot wide trench and a berm and cut down trees and put a ring around that fire and put a stop to it. So my respect to those firemen and Chief Forsett for putting that plan together. And I stayed there for the two days with them and, and, and watched how that all unfolded, one, so I could learn, but two, just in, in amazement of how incident command and a fire department works and how they brought the forces to bear in a time of limited resources. Because there are big fires around this state and they were, they were told, no, we don't have aircraft, we don't have, you know, because there's, there's large fires on the western side of the state, but you know, and I hope I'm not fronting anybody out, but there were, I think there were some favors called in and people said, well, I know somebody, I can get it here if we need it. That's where you become successful, is the relationships built over time that if your town needs it, if your city needs it, I can make a phone call. Meaning John Forsett can make a phone call and get that resource to our town, bring it to bear when otherwise it might not be available for us. So that's, that's my, that's my respect to the fire world. I learned a lot and I was very impressed. And the reason we did not have to evacuate Crystal Park is because of the efforts of of a bunch of dirty firemen that went up a hill and dug and cut and, and chopped down trees and made that possible and spent a night out there for three days. I think overall, uh, to keep us safe. From a police perspective, I think we have suspect, if not a suspect, somebody we want to talk to.
Chief, you're breaking in and out.
Chief, you're pretty well broken out.
Am I back on? Okay. All right, it's showing I have a good signal.
Coming back. You sound good right now, Brian, keep going.
Okay. So we have somebody we want to talk to, the county regional arson investigative team is the responsible law enforcement authority that's investigating this. I have information from them. I don't want to share it on a, on a public forum, but I'm happy to talk with council privately about it. There is an individual we want to talk to that we think is at least present at the time that it started. We're going to be putting out a press release maybe tonight, maybe tomorrow on who that is and who it is we want to talk to. And I, I tell you from, there's no better training than a real-world incident. So from a law enforcement perspective, Monument showed up with us to help and to learn a little bit. A lot of officers from our agency showed up, so I think it sharpened our knife a little bit when it comes to if this happens again or if something like this should happen again and even if be a flood or whatever that we're ready with an evacuation plan to make our people safe and to, and to work through that. For me, this experience was invaluable to sit there and watch and learn incident command regionally, how the, how this operates. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't want to go into too much detail of an ongoing investigation, but I think we, I think we have it. I won't say solved, but I think we know who we want to talk to, um, to look into this. I will tell you that it does not appear that an intent to start a fire, to burn Manitou was the objective. I don't think there is a, an extra need or increase for public safety because somebody is, is looking to start a fire. I do not think that's the case.
Thank you, chief. At this point, I think it'd be appropriate to open it up to city council for questions or comments. Council Wilbrook?
Thank you, mayor. Thanks to both chiefs for the excellent recap that you guys have given tonight. I know, we appreciate it and I know the community appreciates that and all that you've done. If we were not in a COVID situation and you were all able to be in city council chambers tonight, I think you would feel in person the love that we all have and the gratitude that we have for all of you. And I'm, I'm sad that we can't do that tonight, but I hope that everyone on that call is, on this call is sending that to you. I think that this shows us that to you. I think that, um, this shows us the value of our race, of our relationships regionally. Uh, we've been talking about that and this just happened to really demonstrate that. Um, it's also the value of having strong city staff leadership and all our departments. They work together. When I came on council in 2018, a lot of departments were pretty siloed from each other. They did their own thing and they didn't interact. And I'm really grateful that we've made so much progress on this and that I really see a lot of teamwork happening. And I think our whole community benefits from that. I can't thank everyone individually. Um, and other people will have people to thank. I think this also demonstrates the value of having a, a public information officer. That's Alex. Alex did a great job. I think, I felt like he worked three days in a row too, uh, all day and all night. Um, that was obvious from the emails I was getting from him. And, um, you know, it also felt really good that I, that Steve Brimmer was on the ground there. It just felt really good. Steve, thank you for that. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Mayor Brokem?
Thank you. Um, and Chief Forsette, I, I just want to say, um, you know, you did a great job of laying out the incredible complexity of a crisis incidence response. Um, it brought back literally nightmares of when I used to work at Northcom and we'd have a, a crisis. Um, and I was really glad that I didn't have to participate in it. But that brings up the fact that, and you mentioned it, that you really need to have complete trust, um, in the response of the leadership of the city, knowing that, that the leadership has your back. So my question to you is, is there anything that we as city council members could have done or should look to do in the future to make sure that we've got your back?
I don't think this incident brings up anything in particular. Um, it was obvious. It was obvious. I know that you guys are there and, and there may be a time where I need to order resources or one of my folks needs to order resources. I think the same thing applies with Brian. We have a lot of established agreements throughout the region and the state for some resources that on an initial attack period, that first operational period after an alarm is, uh, started for, uh, you know, like air support, we may get something for that first operational period. But after that, there's costs associated with that. And I know that I'm not in a position where I can't order resources if I need them because I'm worried that you guys won't support that resource need. So the, especially those resource costs. So, no, I think we're in a good position. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I've said it before and I'll say it again. I truly believe that we've got the best community fire department in the country. So thank you.
Mr. Brimner, I think you were next.
Yeah, I really think this is a wake up call for our community. Uh, we've got a number of homeless camps out there surrounding our town, out there in the woods. And it represents a clear and present danger. And that fire, uh, highlights that danger. Uh, as soon as I saw the smoke coming up from behind my house, and I live at the very end of Ruxton, I, I made a bee line right up to the trail. I got up there before any firefighters. So I was able to see the fire and then I, I watched, I waited until about dark when, by the time I left, there were about 25 firefighters on that fire. I was very impressed with the action of getting up there and with, uh, you know, the quick response and, and taking control of that fire. And today I went up there on the trail to go see what happened, you know, see the aftermath. And I saw the camp. I'd been in that camp before. Um, not when anybody was actually living there, but maybe a month or more ago I was up there and there was unbelievable amounts of trash. There were about four collapsed tents. There were about three or four bikes in there. It is horrendous hazard, a biohazard. When I went up there today, it was pretty much all burned out. There's some trash away from the fire. There's a few, uh, plastic bags of trash, but the place where all those collapsed tents were and the bikes were is completely burned up. Uh, there's the metal remains, uh, some of the pots and pans and the bikes, uh, with the burned out tires, you know, rubber burned up and everything. But it's, I know of other camps that are just as bad as that. I took, uh, Denise to one yesterday and we took a couple of pictures and we did see click fix. It's actually in the county. Now, I think what we need to do is we need to geo tag, go out and locate all the locations of all of the homeless camps that surround our city out in the woods. And it's possible to do. There's, there's a finite number of them. They're going to be in places that are flat, you know, where you can set up your camp. They're going to be in the hollows and the little canyons and off the trail, a little bit secluded. I think we can find all the sites. And then with community involvement, uh, volunteers, we can clean up the sites because most of the time, uh, the people are moving in and out. There may not even be anybody there, but what remains is a ton of trash, lots of trash in all these camps. So that's going to take community involvement, I think, volunteers to clean up the mess. After that, we're going to have to monitor it to make sure, for one, any camping in the city limits is illegal, not allowed. It's, it's not in the city ordinance. So we cannot tolerate anybody camping in the city limits. When you talk about in the county or on private land that's in the county or Forest Service land, uh, that gets a little bit, then we're going to have to have cooperation from other entities like the county, uh, Colorado Springs Utilities, the COG, and other private landowners that surround our town. Now, what I'd like to have is, I'd like to ask the chief, Chief Churchill, uh, to come back in a month with a plan for how we're going to address, uh, the homeless people that are living in the woods outside of our town. And it may require more funding. I know that we have a limited amount of funding right now. We're able to pay, pay one of our officers overtime, uh, to go out and work on this issue. But I think we probably need a full-time staff member on the police department who's responsible for monitoring the homeless and, and, and tracking this situation because we're in a, in a very precarious situation. And we had the wake-up call with this fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brimner. Do we have other comments? Counselor Chandler?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to commend all of the first responders who, um, were at the scene fighting the fire. Uh, what a phenomenal job. We are so grateful to have you. Um, it, there's nothing like a, an emergency or a potential catastrophe to test a city and to find out, um, what our potential is to rally, to communicate and to respond. And everybody, everybody across the board gets an A plus for me from all of that. I'm over here on Becker's Lane and I was getting phone calls from my friends who live in the pre-evacuation zone saying, can we come over to your house? And, you know, preparing for, for that to happen and saying, absolutely, come, we will do everything we can. Um, and I do agree that it's time, this is a wake-up call. I, if, if nothing else, we have to look at climate change and how dry those conditions were and how ripe this was for a potential rural catastrophe in our town. Um, we don't have to look any further than California to find out what happens when, um, these, these wildfires get out of control. So again, kudos and thank you. And, um, I, I agree with everything that Counselor Woolbrook and Mayor Proctown Fortune, uh, had to offer. Um, I do think we need to look into, um, the homeless camp situation. So I do, uh, thank, uh, Counselor Brimner for being on scene and giving us, uh, updates. That was really helpful. Thank you so much. I thought the members of this council, um, did a phenomenal job to, um, do whatever we could with whatever we had at the time we had it. Um, and, uh, so I, it's my understanding that this was caused or probably caused by a, uh, individual or individuals in a homeless encampment. And, um, we do have to take a look at how we want to respond to this situation, especially going into winter, so that this doesn't happen again. But again, I, I can't thank you enough from the city administration, to the city employees, to our public information officer, our police department and our phenomenal fire department. Thank you so much. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wolf?
Thank you. And I won't, uh, reiterate what everyone else said, but my thank you to all of the first responders. I'm wondering if it, um, might be helpful or of interest to others. Um, I like the idea, uh, about coming up with some kind of strategy on how to manage the homeless camps. Uh, the last time the topic came up in discussion, I believe, um, we were advised, um, by Chief Churchill that at least at this time with COVID, it's best to leave those camps undisturbed. Um, I just wonder if it would be helpful for a future work session to perhaps have someone from, and I don't know if it's, I think it's Carter Springs and not the county, but I think it's Carter Springs, but they have that special team that deals with homeless stuff. You can call them if you don't want someone to get arrested, but you just want them to be removed from your property because they're camping out in your alley kind of thing. Um, uh, so I, I wonder if they could come and talk to us about their approach and their strategy and if there's a way we could either learn from, um, their, um, failures and their successes or, and/or collaborate, um, with that team. Because I love the idea of telling Chief Churchill to come back in a month with some grand plan for us. But I think it's a multifaceted, uh, issue that is going to require lots of coordination. And I'm just wondering if, since they have a head start with that special department, if they could help us.
Thank you. Denise, it looks like you have a response to that?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Um, what I'd like to do, I like, uh, Counselor Brimner's idea is asking chief to look at this for the next month, come back with a plan and present it to council. You guys told us the what, we go back and figure out the how, and we'll bring it back to you and talk about, here are the steps, which will mean talking to the county, talking to the city, talking to all of them and how we can partner together and what that looks like. So I think, and chief may not have it all planned out within a month, but we can at least start it. I know, um, he's already working on a couple of things, uh, looking at trying to, uh, do some additional, uh, finding the camps and those type of things. But I think if we can give him a month to flush this out and then come back and then get ideas and suggestions as we move forward is the best way moving forward. If everybody agrees and I really, we've got to make sure all of council wants that, Mayor, or that four is support that idea.
Understand. And I see Church, uh, Chief Churchill had a comment. Chief?
Yes, sir. Uh, myself and Officer Gary Johnson, our homeless outreach officer, presented the plan and what we currently do in April to all of city council with a PowerPoint and the steps that we take, um, to do this. Um, if we are to expand on what we currently do, which right now we spend five to $15,000 a year just for Gary to go look for homeless camps in overtime. Yeah, cleaning up the camps is approximately $600 a day. And overall for a year in homeless camp cleanup, we're spending about $47,000 is what it takes. So i- it's very expensive. Uh, we've submitted a plan in April with where we're at. Now, after this last weekend with this fire, um, I am happy to work with council on a plan to expand what we already have. And I think, uh, Steve Brimner, uh, had, had a great idea of maybe bringing on another officer. You know, we're a 15 officer department. Currently we pay overtime to a guy to come in on his days off. Him and Counselor Brimner are getting, are going to, going to get together Monday and go look for camps. Um, see click fix will be a great asset for this because people can take pictures and drop a pin on a map. So instead of Barry spending five hours walking through the, through the mountains trying
You're breaking up, Brian.
To him with pictures and a, obviously physically dressed.
Sorry, Brian, you're not making any sense. You're just, it's broken up so much.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting a notification, um, TV in stable connection. Um, if I'm back. Okay, how about now?
And I have a plan tonight. We don't need the plan. Yeah, we don't need the plan tonight. We'll go back. Chief will work on it and he'll come back in a month and kind of talk about it and what it will entail from a financial perspective.
Exactly.
As we do that. So we don't need to work those details. Um, but we will, he'll bring it back in a month and see where we are.
Great. I, I would like the opportunity within this month to sit down with some members of council to devise a plan of what's possible to build upon the plan and the operation that we already have. That's what it's going to take. It's going to take additional resources, manpower and money from the city to build on what we have.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Um, Mr. Shada, you have not had an opportunity to comment. Do you have something?
Um, yes, sir. Um, I'd like to echo everybody else's comments. Having spent six years in Memorial's emergency department on Friday and Saturday nights, I know what an incredible risk it was for everybody on the ground up there in that fire situation. And our community just owes all those people and all the support network, just an amazing thank you and gratitude. Um, the second thing, um, because I don't want to repeat what everybody else said, which is really great, but maybe Denise, I, and this sort of kind of occurred to me later this afternoon, I noticed on see click fix that you can't put a pin outside the city limits. Is there a way that we can kind of, um, get that fixed so that, uh, when people locate something that's a little more accurate?
Yeah. And, um, Counselor Shada, I'll look at that. I did a see click fix yesterday and I can't go in and see what Gary got. So I've got to go see what he received because when Steve, when Counselor Brimmer and I were up there, we did a see click fix and I would see what it comes into him and then we'll see what we can do. Cause you're right, we need it out of, if it's outside of city limits, we still need to know that because then I can send it to the county. So let me do some additional research.
Well, I did experiment with it at 5:30 because somebody who I know is a pretty avid kind of hiker and trail person had tried to find a picture. And, um, if you just wander over with that pen just outside the city limits, they won't let you pin it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're back because that is important. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, in that particular area, the city limits goes fairly far up that slope, but there are other places the city limits is pretty, you know, skinny in terms of, um, where people might be seeing these risks.
And it's sometimes it's right on the border and we need to catch up no matter where it's at. So I will get on that first thing tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it looks like there's pretty broad support for addressing this issue, um, giving the, the police chief direction to pursue the, the homeless problem and then bringing it back to, to city council. Presumably that would be at a work session sometime next month. So it, there, there being apparently no opposition to that, I would go ahead and we'll see about getting that on an agenda in November. Um, Councilman Brimner, thank you for your, your action on this. And, uh, it would seem to me that, uh, you're getting together with the chief is a, is a very good idea. Um, I'd like to express my appreciation to both the fire and the police chiefs and, and to their crews and to everyone who helped. It's, it's been said before, but I'd just like to reiterate that. So, um, Chief Forsette, Chief Churchill, thank you very much for your remarks. I think we can go ahead and push on to the next item. Okay. Our next and in fact, our last discussion item for tonight is the Carnegie Library Building. Um, I believe we're going to start off with, uh, a brief presentation by Christine from the planning department. And then I think- And then I think we anticipate having a presentation by the Save Our Carnegie Library Committee, at which time after that, I'd just like to kind of quickly go around the tables that were and ask councils thoughts. And then we'll go ahead and do some question and answer and have some discussion. So if that sounds agreeable, Christine, you have the floor.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing tonight? All right, I'd like to start, I'd like to share my screen. And while I'm doing that, juicy, we are going to be bringing over John Spears, I believe. John Spears and Rob Dannen, as well as Patty Froll. And I will get my screen shared here. Okay. Judy, do you see everyone? Are they there?
Yes, they're all on the panelist side.
Great. Great. I'll go ahead and get started then. So for those watching, good evening. My name is Christine Lowenberg. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Manitou Springs. Tonight, we are going to be discussing the Carnegie Library Building and how we might put forth a plan that will bring the building into compliance and acknowledge some of the work that has already been done with an eye to the future. So tonight, members of the Preserve and Renew Our Carnegie Library Task Force will be here to seek council support to move forward with the Carnegie Library expansion and ADA compatibility and the interest of retaining the library in the building. I need to ensure that I correct and acknowledge their name in the packet. There were some places where it was not correct. This is the Preserve and Renew Our Carnegie Library Task Force, so my apologies for that. Our guests for tonight's discussion will include John Spears, Executive Director for the Pike Peak Library District. The Library Task Force presentation will be conducted by Patty Froll with support from Rob Dannen. In the council packet, I attempted to provide a full picture of the process and the challenges that we are facing in an attempt to determine what we are going to do with the building and how to best move forward. What I would like to do is briefly provide information from a staff perspective about the activities that the city has participated in in recent years, including public engagement and maintenance, as well as the budgeted funds that we have in the city. So in thinking about our conversation tonight, we have approximately 60 minutes on the agenda. We may not take that entire time. But in putting together the presentation for tonight, I saw that we may have sort of four distinct segments. Briefly, from a staff perspective, what has been done by the city. The task force provided a presentation. And then discussion and direction with council, our guests, and then direction from council. Okay, so I would like to begin with understanding the funds that the city currently has earmarked for the Carnegie Library Building. This was verified by our finance team. We have two specific fund balances. First, within the general fund, there's a committed fund balance of $276,658.43. I detailed there for you exactly where those funds came from. The vast majority of that came from a 2015 donation by the Janes Estate. This bequest was intended to help expand the library's ability to meet the needs of folks with handicap and accessibility needs. The second place that we have dollars set aside is another committed fund balance. This was established by Ordinance 4317 of $50,000. This particular was appropriated by city council in 2017 into a capital improvement fund, CIP. That was one of the items that we noted last week in our budget retreat. This is intended to go towards a library remodel. These dollars came from that bequest from the Janes Estate. As well, for those who have not been a part of the process most recently, I wanted to provide a quick recap of the activities that the city has participated in. There has been many community activities, but these are the items that the city has participated in. As you can see, there were multiple attempts. This is on the screen, but we'll talk about it later. There have been prior attempts to gain community input and an engagement process. The most important one that we're going to talk about tonight, obviously, is that that began in 2016. All right, so with this, then, I would like to also now talk a little bit about the public engagement process. The city was a partner in this process. The stakeholders that were in this with Manitou Springs residents, Pike Peak Library District, as well as the City of Manitou Springs. In 2015, the city advertised a request for proposal for a draft design for a library expansion project. Six responses were received. And ultimately, the selection committee recommended Thorpe and Thorpe Associates. The city executed the contract with that firm in July of that year. Thorpe was selected based on their experience with library design around the country. According to the scoring sheets that are in the file that I was able to review preparing for this, Mr. Thorpe was expected to provide a quality product at a reasonable price. The public engagement process and method for gathering the community input was facilitated by the city staff and Mr. Thorpe's firm. The key stakeholders, as I mentioned a moment ago, were the residents, the library district, and the city. There were two meetings that were held to gather community feedback. Those were held on July 25th of 2016, as well, an 18-question survey was distributed to the public, and 83 responses were received. In your packet, I included that survey as well as the responses there. For that survey, receiving just over 80 responses put us, in comparison to our population, at approximately 14%. This was an in-person survey. It was not conducted online. And so typically, for a survey of all responses, you would see somewhere between 10% to 30% response rate. Given that this was 14% and in-person, from a planning perspective at a national level, it was considered a high indicator of community interest at that time. All right, so then I'd like to move here into just showing side by side of what the Thorpe design was. I will very briefly review this. I think it's really important because I believe the task force would like to go into some greater detail about this. This is the design that successfully garnered approvals from the HPC, Parib, and city council at that time. I did include in the planning staff memo the minutes that approved this plan. In that packet, you will see that there was an attachment from the HPC. That was a unanimous approval by members who were present. A public meeting also was held on January 9th in 2017. That same month, the plan was presented to Parib, the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. The importance of that is because this is considered a park. So at that time, Parib unanimously recommended approval. They noted that there needed to be additional work regarding access in the parking plan. And this would be addressed as the expansion process continued. Ultimately, the plan was presented to city council on February 17th in 2017. Generally, the notes that, from that meeting and the minutes, indicate that the public comments were generally in support, with the exception of the Avenue Hotel. During that meeting, the architect reviewed the design and the priorities of retaining the historical character of the building. As you'll see in the minutes and the notes from those meetings that I included for you, Mayor Nicoletta at the time made the motion, and it was seconded and ultimately unanimously approved by the city council at that time. I think it's important to recognize that any path forward to improve the Carnegie building will require final engineering and construction costs. The architectural drawings that were put together did come up with an estimated cost of $2.1 million. That was at a $365.54 per square foot cost. With the exception of finances, actions, and managing the funds, there has been no further staff activity on this project since that February 17th, excuse me, February 7th of 2017 city council meeting. Ultimately, a plan for the funding and expansion was needed in addition to addressing the monies that came from the Janes bequest. I believe that this will be discussed in much more detail by the task force in just a moment. So this is a rendering on the left, on the right, of what the proposed building will look like. On the left is the current building. I wanted to put those side by side for you to be able to compare what is there now and what is to be. As well, on this slide, you'll note that on the left is a Google map, basically, an overview of the location and what it looks like at this time. On the right is the proposed site plan. There is some discussion that needed to be had around parking and retaining how much of the park was going to be retained and that sort of thing. And my expectation is there'll be some discussion about that later as well. All right, handicap accessibility. So the notes on the deliverable that are in the city from these 2017 approved designs indicate that the full spectrum of handicap accessibility was considered. This included elevators, entrance to the building, restrooms, as well as mobility throughout the building amongst bookshelves and other permanent fixtures. The plans, the notes at that time represent that the plans were best practice in library design and handicap accessibility because of that full spectrum. As we know, this council had, on March 18th, or excuse me, actually, it was about two months later, discussed with John Spears and the Pike Peak Library District a March 18th complaint that was received by the Office of Civil Rights. And this particular complaint alleged that the Pike Peak Library District discriminated against persons with disabilities. Specifically, the complainant alleged that the district at Manitou Springs Library denies access to persons by failing to provide an accessible entrance. So that complaint specifically was addressing the entrance. As you know, this complaint prompted the closure of the Carnegie building. The library was expected, if the plans had moved forward, the library was expected to have moved out of the building anyway during construction. So the move was not too foreign of a concept, and the library district had already begun to give some thought to how this would occur. In light of that complaint, there has been at least one member of the community who has provided designs with the intent of informing the conversation specific to ADA compliant bathrooms and elevators. These designs have been informally shared by this private individual with city staff and city council members. These designs were unstamped and have not had the opportunity to be sponsored for review by these other boards and commissions. I did provide opportunity to present these plans at this meeting. The offer was declined. This individual indicated that he was interested in informing the conversation and helping us understand that there may be a different path forward or a slightly modified path forward. I have not had the opportunity to compare the latest designs that were sent late this afternoon. I have not been able to compare the square footage of those, nor have we begun cost estimates there. This particular plan proposes a two-phase approach that also, in addition to restrooms and elevators, does include additional space in the building. So with that, from a staff perspective, I'd like to conclude my report. What I would like to do, if it's suitable to you, Mayor Graham, is I would like to turn the presentation over to the members of the task force. And when they complete that, then I do have an additional slide that provides some options for consideration.
I think that'll be just fine.
Okay, okay, I'm going to go ahead and stop share now. And I believe Patty, will you be sharing your screen or will Rob?
I would like Rob to share his screen while I speak.
Okay.
We have a PowerPoint that Patty will be speaking from.
Rob, we're having a hard time hearing you. You're pretty soft spoken on that.
Can you hear me?
It's a little better. Try it again.
I'll give it my full gusto. Can you hear me now?
That's so good.
It's still pretty soft, yeah.
How's that?
That's better.
That's better.
All right. I'm from Newark, and I've never been told I was soft spoken. So here we go. Here is the PowerPoint, I hope. Can you see that?
Not yet.
Your screen is being shared, but right now it's just a black screen.
There we are.
Okay, good. And Patty will be talking from this, and I'll be taking care of the slides.
Thank you. My name is Patty Fraley. It's a hard name to say when you see it spelled. But thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to meet with you this evening. I, along with Rob, will be representing our task force. Also watching is Margaret Morris, who most of, well, some, not all of you know, as the former manager of the Carnegie Library here in Manitou. She recently retired. I want, I think our task force formed about eight, 10 weeks ago, thanks to Rob's leadership. We have about 50 interested persons, citizens at the moment, and about 10 active task force members. I don't want to repeat anything Christine has gone over. She was very thorough, and I went through her presentation. So rather than be repetitive, I just want to highlight who we are and why the task force was created and what we can do to help the city expand the Carnegie Library and make it ADA compliant. Rob, would you go to slide two, please? The Carnegie Library is, I think, the most iconic historic building in Manitou. It's one of the few remaining Carnegie libraries in the country. And it sits right at the heart of the city. It's just below the elementary school. It's on a beautiful parkland. And we think that the post office and the library are the only two historic buildings in Manitou that still operate as they were originally intended. The libraries can be the center of a community. They are in so many cities and towns around the world. And Manitou's population has grown fourfold since the library was opened in 1911. So expanding the library would provide access to all people, everyone in the community. And today's libraries serve so many more functions than they used to. In our executive summary that I believe was sent out, we have a list of just some of the features of what libraries in the 21st century are for their communities. Would you go to slide three? Thank you. There have been citizens groups in Manitou in different forms. Almost 20 years ago, several members of the community formed the Friends of the Library for our library here in Manitou with the hope of expanding it and making it ADA compliant. That's been almost 20 years' worth of effort. That hasn't really subsided much at all over those 20 years. There's been more than one opportunity to go in front of the city council as Christine indicated. And if you want to see some of the history of what has been done in the community, you can go to our attachment, see in the original document sent to you. We're working on a comprehensive repository for all things related to this library from 1911. We're working on a comprehensive repository for all things related to this library from 1911 on. And a couple of members of our team have gone through Friends of the Library records, Board of Trustees records from before Pikes Peak Library District came into Manitou, government minutes, tons of information at the Heritage Center, but we really want to have a repository of everything that that anybody wants to know about the Manitou Library. And so that's an ongoing project, but at least that that attachment C has some of the history of the efforts that have been put in place to do what we're trying to do now, which is expand that library and make it ADA compliant. As Christine in her memo describes, the process was led by city staff for the 2016-2017 iteration of this effort. There are P's, the community meetings, the charrettes that were prepared, the community surveys, parab and HPC approvals. That all of that work was done by citizens and staff of Manitou Springs. And although we understand that some in the community, community may have reservations, Manitou has a history of choosing the common good over individual concerns. And as Christine mentioned, in 2017, city council voted unanimously to move forward. Would you go to slide four? One thing that we think is important is that we have continuity of the efforts put in place by the community, citizens as well as staff, on city, city staff and continuity of governance. We've been through this effort more than once and over 20 years and a lot of thousands of hours have been put into this and tens of thousands of dollars, both from the community and about 10,000 from the city. So we just feel it's very important, even though we're a new task force, we were made up of a lot of people who have been involved in this process for the last 20 years. Some people who have have multi-generational, you know, been multi-generational families here who've used that library. And we hate to see all of that work be wasted and starting from scratch. So we just wanted you to know, we think that's very important. Would you go to slide five, please? So given all the work that's been put in place, we think there's no better time than now. There's a confluence of opportunities and events that give us the best window to move forward. As we show here, the rendering that Christine showed with of the Thorpe drawings, it is a seamless expansion to the existing building. It blends in well. We've had community support for these plans. We've gotten the approvals. PPLD has accepted the Thorpe plans. You have a group of motivated citizens who want to do the heavy lifting to make this happen. And given that PPLD has moved out, it couldn't be a better time than now to get this done. Go to the next slide. With the city council approval in 2017, there was no funding vehicle for this. So one of the main motivations of the match committee was to ensure funding for a Carnegie library expansion. That effort, as as most of you know, involved citizens and city staff. However, due to a technical process issue, the citizen ballot initiative did not meet Secretary of State's requirements. So this required city council to propose a ballot, the ballot language, which was changed somewhat from what the original intent was. City council most notably added Hiawatha Gardens to share in the tax revenue. The match board's interpretation of its purpose is somewhat we feel different than was the original intent. Some of you probably have the document that the match committee provided to city council in August, on August 27th, 2019, which laid out very clearly what could be done with with the match funds, once the city council, once it got through the ballot process. At the time, the Carnegie library portion of the tax revenue was intended to fund debt service on a bond or loan that we would use to expand the library and make it ADA compliant. That seems not to be exactly the case as the as the match board is seeing things at this point in time. But if the city council would wish to use those match funds going that are set aside for the Carnegie building, that would be able to cover about 60% of a $2 million loan at 3% interest over 15 years. The good news is that, and I apologize, that's the first line item of existing funding is off by $3,000. I keep leaving off, unfortunately, the donations that were made by individuals in the community on top of the Janes bequest. So that number really is 326,658. The Friends of the Manitou Springs Library before PPLD took over library services had been raising money for the purpose of expansion. And we estimate there's about $10,000 of funds that still remain from the pre PPLD days that could be used as well. The the big thing that we offer at this stage is support for fundraising to make this actually get off the ground and be become real. There in our, in our documents, we have some information about the the endangered places program, EPP, which is a well-respected organization that awards recognition to endangered places. And we were encouraged to apply for the grant, their recognition. And just this afternoon, good timing, we got word from EPP that we've made it through the regional review process. There are about 13 organizations or endangered places that are now going to be reviewed and at the national level. And we should hear in December whether we get that recognition or not. They give it to about three to four organizations a year. That EPP designation, even if we don't win the, get in the final running for that or final, we're not finally chosen as one of the three to four organizations, that just even being a finalist is a gives us a big leg up on grants. We also would be able to do a capital campaign for, you know, getting corporate and individual donors, you know, go after grants with the city having matching funds. That's an important piece for obtaining grants. So if you, if you look at, sorry, go to slide seven. We're, we're just a group of people, not just through this task force, but now we're, the iteration of this effort is through the task force. Just really build the historical significance of the Carnegie Library, want to make it a building that works for everybody through an expansion and ADA compliance, so that we can continue to have it be a library, the center of Manitou Springs community. Slide eight. So basically, we want you to vote yes on option one and to use the match funds assigned to the Carnegie to approve, to be able to service the debt on a bond or a loan. We want to be your partners along with PPLD to make this happen after all of the thousands of hours and years of work on trying to get this our library to be a 21st century library. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing, one more thing. Mayor, if any of you haven't been in the library recently, not that things have changed, but if you want to get another look at it, we would be happy to do tours of the library for the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christine, I we're gonna bring in John Spears next, or?
I certainly could. John is on the screen. John, did you want to add anything to that? Did you want to allow some conversation to occur and then make some comments?
Um, I could do both. One quick comment, which is just, thank you for, you know, I want to thank Patty and Rob and the committee for the work that they've done to kind of piece all of this together. And then Christine as well. And then just thank council for another opportunity to come and represent the library district. As we just do, I think, what what everyone's goal is, which is just provide a facility that the residents of Manitou Springs deserve and the one in the past, they've said that they that they desire. Our hope is just that we can keep providing library service to the residents of Manitou Springs, and we will do that regardless of where it's from. But our intention is to stay in Manitou Springs and just do the best job that we can. So thanks for having me here one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Christine, I gather that's, that concludes the presentation by the Save Our Carnegie Library folks. Okay, and I, yeah, if you go ahead again, Christine.
Sure, I'll go ahead and share my screen one more time. So in putting this together, I was asked to consider and from a staff perspective and put forward three options. I'm going to go ahead and go to that screen now. So the first one is, is a request. Our first option is, is to consider this request and move forward with it as it is approved. There are still a number of steps that need to occur before we get there. We need to go to the process, go through the process of final construction, final design and construction documents, as well as updating cost estimates. What we could consider with this as well is that we come back in 45 days. Ask task, ask the task force to come back in 45 days with some more details on how we can move forward. What our plan in 2021 would look like. What are some of the challenges and what are the opportunities that are there? At that point, I would expect there will also be some additional conversation with match. The second option is, is to again, utilize the task force and keep them engaged. They have some really good infrastructure in place for considering how we move forward if this council determines that we need to revisit the design and consider any updates there. And so with that, same criteria, but again, in 45 days, come back, consider some of these suggestions that have come forward through their public input process and subcommittees and come back to council with some recommendations. The third option, of course, is for a city council to decline support of of one and two, but to really decline where we are. And that has, that has some specific ramifications that would leave us sort of dead in the water, if you will. And so we'd need to consider, what are we going to do after that if option three is the one that this group decides to execute?
Thank you. Thank you, Christine. At this point, I think it'd be useful to, for, for, for council members to, if we could just kind of briefly kind of get a feeling for what our, what our our present thoughts are, and before we get into deep discussion, if we could just again, go around the table and kind of get a feeling for what we consider to be the, the options that we're interested in. Then I'd propose that we go ahead and take, take some time to ask questions from the from the library proponents and perhaps from Mr. Spears. And then we could go ahead and continue our discussion. So if we could just kind of go around the, the table and get a quick assessment. Guess I'll start off with Mayor Protem. You're muted.
Yep, got it. Yeah, first, I really appreciated the packet that was submitted. It was very, very informative and answered quite a few of my questions. So thank you for that. I have three priorities. One is to keep the library in the, in the Carnegie building. I do think that that's important. And then making that building ADA compliant obviously is very important. So the real question, as has been outlined, is whether we expand beyond making it ADA. So as has been mentioned, we've got 20 years of community activism on that. So my, my first foot stomped comment is that do we really want to start over? Because I don't think, I personally don't think it's worthwhile starting over because I don't believe we're going to come up with something substantively different than what we have. We're on a trajectory. We've been on that trajectory for a long time. So we might reduce it a little bit, but is the agony of starting over again worth that cost savings? And I'm not an architect. I don't know. We, I would like, and I completely support creating an action plan to build things to the concept. Using the dollars that we currently have in the budget to help with a capital campaign and to get construction drawings done. I think that there should be sufficient dollars to do that. I do not support the city council directing the match board to direct how the match dollars are divided. I think we need to leave the match board, the autonomy to make that recommendation and the city support, the city submit a an application for what they desire. And lastly, what I want to say is that there is a tremendous amount of passion. And I want to make real sure, and they've stated it tonight, but that the the task force is willing to roll up their sleeves and really get this done. Because our staff is thin, very thin to take on extra projects. But I, I'm a firm believer in Manitou citizens coming up with stuff with staff support and getting things done. So but I want, you know, you can't hold citizen groups accountable necessarily. So that, that is my, that is my concern. And then some of the other concerns, you know, with parking is a problem, you know, homeless people hanging out there is potentially an issue. There's all sorts of peripheral issues that we'll have to deal with, but I think we need to make a decision and move out now and quit agonizing over this. So that, that's kind of where I am right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'd like to go next. Counselor Chandler, please.
Yeah, please tell me if I go over five minutes because I have quite a few things to say. I'm extremely passionate about the Carnegie Library continuing to operate as a library. I had the opportunity to view, to take a tour of the library. Unfortunately, with COVID, closing the library with Counselor Shada, Administrator Howell, and members of the Pikes Peak Library District when it was closed to the public. So the building itself, obviously, as old as it is, is going to need some love and care and refurbishment, of which I do want to acknowledge that we need to factor those costs in. I, when the original complaint came in about ADA accessibility, the original complaint was regard to, to getting into the building. And I want to apologize to the citizens of Manitou that I did not know what it takes to to be an ADA compliant library, but I did some research. And there are a minimum of 12 criteria that it takes to be ADA compliant. And I'm telling you this because it's not just the getting into the door. It's not just getting into a bathroom. It's parking. It's the grading of sidewalks. It's how far bookshelves are away from each other. And I'm here to tell you that the current footprint of the Carnegie library, if we were to meet all ADA criteria, is not feasible to be a library in the 21st century library sense. And I've had the golden opportunity to meet with Rob Danin. Thank you personally. And also with Margaret to educate me on what a 21st century library looks like. So it would require, we, we would have to expand. I agree with Mayor Protem. Fortune, let's not reinvent the wheel. We have all of this hard work that has been put in. I think we should go ahead with Plan A. I also agree with Mayor Protem Fortune that I am not worried about finding the funds to make this happen. I do think that we can't hamstring match advisory board with how they're going to disperse those funds. However, again, I'm not really worried about that. One of the most vocal dissents on the library were the neighbors at the Avenue Hotel. It's my understanding that they have either sold or are in the process of selling that property. It's my understanding that they have either sold or are in the process of selling that property. So I I just really advocate that we support all of the amazing hard work, accept the Thorpe plans and move ahead with Plan A. Thank you so much for your tremendous hard work, and I look forward to to the Carnegie Library being the Carnegie Library again. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Who else would? Mr. Shada.
I would support option one. I believe that we ought to move ahead. And I think we ought to get a good sounding out of the MATCH board as to just how much money, you know, they're willing to commit for kind of that $100,000. That $100,000 a year, isn't that what that kind of comes out to be? I'm sorry, where's my calculator? Can somebody jump in here in terms of what that amount was?
John, in one of their slides, they had some numbers there. It was like $100,000. I think that was a year, and they figured that would be 65% coverage. Maybe Patty could speak to that. Patty, could you jump in there and answer Mr. Shada's question?
Yes, I was using the original MATCH initiative to there, they're, they expected that the debt service could be provided on a $2 million loan, 15-year over, out of the MATCH funds for the library. I I think that that number could be different. I mean, we're in COVID time now. Obviously, there's no guarantee that that's the amount of funds that would be set aside, that would have originally been set aside for the Carnegie expansion. But that was the initial plan. So obviously, MATCH doesn't have to provide those funds for that purpose. But it was about $100,000 that they expected could be used for that.
So I have a quick question here. So essentially, $100,000 a year would finance about 1.2 million. Is that not correct?
That's about right, given, you know, that we'd have to come up with.
Right? And then the total construction cost, that was 2.1 million?
In 2017, yes.
Yes, okay. And so, so given kind of the context of that, in terms of, I guess, I kind of were kind of optimal.
I'm sorry.
I'm saying, I would, I would prefer that we go ahead with option number one. And in other words, that we try and figure out if we can get a commitment out of the MATCH board for a certain amount of money. Because I think that's really key in going after other grants is to show what our local commitment to this is. And I think barring that, I think I'd be totally open for the council to consider some kind of way if the MATCH board isn't interested in that kind of a commitment.
Thank you, Mr. Shada.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next? Counselor Wolf.
And thank you for all the hard work on this.
Julia, your volume's pretty weak.
Oh.
Oh, no, now it's okay.
Oh, I'll yell. Okay. Like Rob, I'm an East Coaster, and I'm not usually told that I'm too quiet, right, Rob? So yes, I, my, my primary commitment is to make sure this is ADA compliant ASAP. And if that means we have to go in phases, that's fine with me. I don't know that if we will or not. I I agree with what's been said. It makes a lot of sense to me that we need to find out what the MATCH board's recommendations to council are, about how much money they can commit to and so forth before we make other decisions. But just for the record, theoretically, if the MATCH board chose to designate the money for this year elsewhere, then I would, I would agree. I think this is what John Shada was going toward, is that if they won't do it, then we need to find that money somehow. We need to, we need to get creative. So that, because that's a priority, one way or the other. Not necessarily doing a $3 million expansion, but at least trying to address the entrance issue in, you know, as step one. And I would think the bathroom issue, just to kind of respond to the issues that were raised in the most recent complaint. So, yeah, and I don't know the timeframe. I don't know if I missed that this evening. But I don't know what kind of timeframe the MATCH board is considering when they're going to issue the recommendations to council about the money. Do we know?
I think it's March, isn't it, Nancy?
Yeah, the applications will be due, I believe, in January, if memory serves me. And there, they are still working on how they will, the criteria that they're using, as well as just the application packet. So there's a lot to be done. But if the application comes in very strong, then that will in fact impact how the MATCH board, you know, decides or recommends distribution. Again, I just want to emphasize, I would hope that council would not get into directing the MATCH board and and how they should distribute. It certainly, council's prerogative. I just don't think it would be a good start to that board if we started getting into that. Thanks. And I completely agree with that last comment. I I never intended that we should try to railroad them or anything. We, we selected them to advise us and not the other way around. I agree with that. I just wanted to make sure. Because the other thing, the other comment, and this is maybe obvious because we keep saying 2017, but if it was 2.1 million in 2017, it's probably 3 million today, right? Or more, maybe I'm low, you know, because building, cost of building skyrocketing right now. All those materials and the tariffs and all that stuff. But I'd at least like to make it ADA compliant as step one with respect to a bathroom that's in a logical place. I think we can use that library with just one bathroom in the existing space rather than dealing with two, which would save some money. And I'd love to see, you know, an elevator and access to the building at least as phase one if we can't do the whole thing. I'd also be somewhat curious to see if there are alternatives to the Thorpe design that should be considered because I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. But I also had been emailed two design attachments from one of our citizens, maybe the same person that was referenced before, who wanted me to look at these drawings. I think I can say is from Gerhart. He's an architect. And he sent me some drawings that he's trying to get my support on or at least have me look at. And I've also seen a drawing that Tina Reister did that looked really wonderful. So I I'm not necessarily committed to spending a ton of money based on one drawing. It kind of reminds me of, you know, it's time to buy a home. This is a huge investment, and you don't just buy the first house you see. So I'm not talking about expensive detailed renditions, you know, that would be submitted to regional building, but just some design concepts. I also wonder, because it is a historic building, if those 12 criteria for the ADA compliance for libraries, I I'm under the impression that some of those can be waived when you're dealing with a historic building. Certainly not access to the building. But if you have to ask a librarian to make a copy for you because you can't reach the copy machine from your wheelchair, I I don't think that would be necessarily making the building illegal, even though that may be one of the 12 criteria since it's historic. So I just don't know if if we could come into at least partial compliance, even if we don't have all three or four million dollars that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wolf. Mr. Bremner, could you share your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, I'm inclined to go along with option number one. I agree with the other council members who said that we we shouldn't, you know, bulldoze the MATCH group into making, you know, compliance with what we want. I think that should come from them if if that's what their decision is. So that's, that's all my comments.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Counselor Wilbrook?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So I'm not going to repeat comments that have already been made by others. I do want to thank Rob for reaching out to meet with me. Also Christine to give me some additional information on this. Both of those meetings were extremely helpful to me, and I do appreciate that. I do believe that this building needs to be made ADA compliant, and that is definitely a priority for the city, for sure. Similar to the comments that I made in our work session on Hyofera Gardens, though, I think that, you know, it's easy to look at this in a vacuum, but it isn't really how we make decisions as a city. And I'll come back to that at the end and talk a little bit more about how that weighs on me in terms of, you know, the current events and representing the city. I do understand that, you know, the Thorpe plans were made in 2017 with the best practices at the time. This is my ward, and and this is the reason that I have, I think, additional concerns probably other than other counselors. So these were best practices at the time, but they're definitely pre-COVID plans, and COVID's changed the way we all live and work. So I just want to mention that that is one of the things that weighs on me. Also, these plans were pre-climate action plan. During my first two years on council, there was a climate action plan and resolution passed. And I don't believe that the Thorpe plans were vetted against that. I do, I did read in there that there, you know, are going to be some green related, meaning energy and climate friendly things, but it's not very specific. So those are concerns that I have. I think that the fact that the Thorpe plan was done was great. The choice of that was good. Certainly, he was an expert on Carnegie libraries as well. But there are things about this plan that I don't feel are exactly right for Manitou. I do believe design is important, and that's why we might need to take a pause and look for some middle ground and some compromise between this task force, the city, and residents, specifically in my ward. And that Hodges and the Avenue Hotel weren't the only people who had concerns. So I don't want it to sound like, well, they've moved on and everybody's great because there's a lot of concerns about congestion and parking in that neighborhood that still exist and still really need to be addressed through community engagement. There are, so Gerard's been mentioned. He is someone who could help us with that. I have really deep concerns about the expansion. I know that over the 20 years that this, that people have been working to make this compliant, that it's it's shrunk a little bit. But this is one of our parks. And it really surprises me that Parib is okay to pave over it. It's our sledding hill. It's a park that not only people in my ward use, but people all over the city use. And I use it almost every day. And especially in light of COVID, I've seen a lot of kids playing and dancing on that very area where, you know, a big expansion might take place, and that's concerning to me. So I, and there's other things about this plan, like the removal of the Greenstone wall, that concern me from a standpoint of HPC. I'm really kind of surprised at the decision by both Parib and and HPC in the past. Because I don't know, you know, it's pretty hard to do anything with Greenstone walls, even for private citizens. So those are concerns I have. And it is one of our downtown parks. It is well-used. And that doesn't, you know, that's not saying that we have to not make this building ADA or abandon it. I'm not saying that at all. But I just think that option number two, looking at some, some good alternatives to some of the things that have been proposed in the Thorpe plan would be worth our while. We get one chance to do this. This has been our library for 100 years, and it may be our library for another 100 years. So we don't need to rush into things that may not be perfect, especially for the ward in which this sits. And then there are concerns, and I, you know, these aren't individual concerns. These are concerns for my ward, the homeless issue, which I won't go into, but the traffic congestion, the parking. All of those are not individual concerns unless you consider my ward an individual. Because there's people in my ward, and it's going to impact not having this park space and some other things. So I just want to mention that. So given all of those concerns, you know, what would we do if it were up to me? And I'm but one of seven. Here's some things I would think about. I would think about giving Pike's Peak Library District some time to assess. They're also in the center of downtown, pretty much in the middle of town, location at the MAC for the coming year. How does that work for them? I read the article in the Gazette that said they were really delighted to have the maker space and other options at the MAC available. I think the MAC can benefit from having the rent money even more than the city can, just food for thought. So I'm glad they're going to be able to help out, and that this is working for PPLD, and they're going to have that extra revenue. It's not a lot of revenue, but it is a little bit, and I'm sure that will help. I think it gives both the library and the MAC more traffic. And the Beehive is there too, which is another kind of newly launched community resource. And libraries are certainly community resources. So I'd really like to say, let's give this some time to see how this works, what works, what doesn't. We would get that information back through PPLD. I think we also need to understand how COVID's impacted libraries, which is a little probably, we know what so far, but it's, we're all in the middle of COVID. Like more information on that. I really would like to see this task force compromise and work on some ideas for a smaller space, ADA compliant with some of the things that other people have recommended. I'd like to see that. And I think, let's see, what are my other notes? The other thing I'd like is, you know, I'd like for staff to help us, not the committee by itself to do community engagement. But we have staff members who are really trained in community engagement, how to do meaningful surveys, how to write survey questions that are not leading. But so I don't think we need to hire a consultant to do this. I also think that if we're going to do community engagement, it needs to be kind of driven by city staff along with the help of the task force. And I guess I'm a little confused, and this can be answered at the end of everyone's comments. But I got the impression that no matter what we did, that there would have to be citizen input on the financing, bond or loan. And I need clarification on that. Because if we do have to go to the citizens and say, do you approve of this? All the work that I'm talking about doing now with compromises and tweaking and looking at this will make all of that better if you have to do that. You know, for me, I differ from everyone on council on this topic about it being the best time. I think that this is a pretty hard time with COVID, lots of uncertainty about an election. I don't know what COVID's going to look like in the near future or even the long-term future. I worry about our city. And so this isn't just a library comment, but it is a comment about timing because I am concerned that we may have some really big lockdowns. It's all possible. How that's going to impact us? What is our city going to do? How's that going to affect the ability to get grants and get people engaged in capital campaigns and other things? So I just differ in that from the rest of my fellow counselors. I think that it's good for Christine to give us 45 days. It doesn't fall off the radar. But COVID cases are rising. The election's coming up. And I I don't know how much of the community is going to really get really deep down about this. And you don't want to miss that opportunity to do community engagement, especially if you need to go to the voters about financing later, and they feel like, well, I didn't never hear about that. Well, you didn't hear about it because of COVID and the election and trying to make a living and trying to get by. So those are concerns I have. And I appreciate being able to share them tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, I guess I'm last. You know, I've kind of struggled with this. At various times, I thought that it would be nice to have another option, maybe a less grand, cheaper, more of a plan that we could execute to. And as I think about it and look at the amount of time that we've spent trying to get the library up to snuff, I guess I'm becoming kind of impatient, and I'm gravitating more towards the option A. Let's, let's take the plan that we've got and execute to it. That said, it's, it's kind of easy for council to say, you know, task force, you go off and find the money. And then if you guys can find the money, that makes, makes it a lot easier, obviously. Yeah, yeah, there's, there's some other questions that, that come to mind. Mr. Thorpe had the indecency to die on us. So now I think we're, we have to relocate, we have to find an architect who can come up with the actual blueprints that, that we can work to. So there's some technical things, that would be one. I think we need a good financial plan. I think that could be done either way, I suppose. My, my thought, I guess, would be to support option A. But to, to make it clear to the task force that we need to not sit on this for very long. We need some, some feedback going on in 45 days and again, you know, every 60 days. I don't want this to, to go out forever. I mean, if in six months we're, we're not seeing a solution, then I'd, then I'd be inclined to look at something else, maybe something a little more modest. I can appreciate councillor Wolbrecht's comments. I mean, that's, that's, if this was happening in, in my neighborhood, I think I'd have those same concerns about traffic congestion, homeless and that sort of thing. But I think that's, that's enough comments for, for right now. So we've gone around, we've taken the temperature. It looks like supports gravitating, gravitating towards option A. Councilors, at this point, I would open it up for general questions and discussion. And actually, I think there was a question that came up about the library district. Maybe Mr. Spears would like to speak to it as to, is, is option A the only option in your mind or what? If, if we can't raise the money, for instance, what, what, what's plan B in your mind, Mr. Spears?
Well, I, I think, and I'll, I'll just talking back to kind of what, what the library district has been saying from the beginning. Our goal is to provide library services in Manitou Springs in the best way that we can. When the district joined in 2013, the intention at that point was that the building would be expanded. That, that was, and you can see that from the work that Christine did and the work that the committee did in putting together the timelines of all, of how all of that has played out. You know, when, when you have those three options, and I don't think this is a shock, option two and option three really aren't options for us to provide library service from the Carnegie. From the beginning of this, and actually in the memorandum that was signed between PPLD and the city just several months ago, it doesn't just mention ADA. It mentions the ability to operate out of a building that would allow us to provide the same level of services that we do in all of our other locations. So things such as meeting rooms, things such as a computer lab, a teen area. Just making the building ADA compliant without any additional changes honestly would, in some ways, make it almost a less desirable building. In, in one way, it would be more desirable in terms of access, but we'd lose a couple hundred feet of space. And it would turn into, you know, something kind of akin to if you've been to the, the, the Ute Pass Library or, or the Palmer Lake Library. So our hope is that option one is the one that's selected. I, I think that that's, you know, and I, I think that we've been pretty transparent on that from, 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 from the beginning of this. I've, I've seen some of the other plans. And I, I would just ask that please allow the library district to be a part of those plans. Because I, I can say, for instance, one set of plans I saw, we don't have a giant reference room and study carols anymore. And there was no computer lab. I mean, I, I respect that people have brought forward plans, but a library is a very specific type of building with very specific needs. I, I guess that's how it ended, other than to just say, I, I would offer to meet with in any city council members as well. You know, council member Wolbrook, I live in your ward. I've offered before, I offer again. I will be more than happy to meet with you to discuss some of the specific concerns and issues you have about what a 21st century library is. I want to address one really quick, and that's the issue of homeless, people experiencing homelessness in libraries. Yes, they actually congregate in libraries, there's no question about that. And yes, we actually help them escape homelessness, which is something that very few other organizations can say. So when you see a homeless person in a library, actually, hopefully they're on their way out of it. So, okay. But any questions that you might have about the library or what our desires are, I'm here anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Denise?
I do want to mention that if you go for a bond or a loan, you do have to go to the voters. That would be required is that you go to the voters next November unless if there's a special vote for that. So that would be required by the city. The other thing I will just mention is if they did a capital campaign, and I was the board chair of Karen Share when they agreed to start the capital campaign, there is a process to go through that. And it's a great way to subsidize at least some of the cost if the committee wanted to do that.
Thank you, Denise. Christine?
I just wanted to share a little bit of experience when you, when we begin with architectural drawings and an estimated cost per square foot, that number will be incredibly refined as we go through the engineering process. My expectation is that as we go through that final engineering, there will be tightening up of costs. We will also have a better idea of what our budget is. We can look at a price per square foot that we feel is manageable. So, you know, in my experience and my background, it's typically value engineering where you're going, where you have, you know, you have like 80% of your design done, which is essentially what this is. And then you get all the way through that final step. And the cost can be refined a great deal. So I think that that would be, that's really important for us to understand as we, as we move through this, no matter what this process looks like, we'll, we'll see some refinement there. As well, we'll be able to also understand the FFNE. Right, that means the fixtures, the furniture, that sort of thing. What it is that the library will be engaging in. So there will be a lot more details that would come forth, whether, no matter how you decide as a group to move forward on this, we've got a lot more information, I think, to, to come out on this that'll, that'll help educate all of us on the final cost and what we need to do.
Great, thank you, Christine. Councillor Bremner?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that we, we have limited resources. We have a couple of buildings we've been talking about renovating or bringing back. And I just took a tour today of the Hiawatha building down there. And I would just, I think that the Carnegie library is a priority for me when I compare those two buildings. And so if we, if we're going to concentrate on one building, which I, I think we really have to be realistic and just look at what our resources, resources are, what the possibilities are for raising funds. We should just concentrate on one building, that would be the Carnegie.
Thank you, Steve. Well, just kind of taking a temperature, it looks like Mayor Protem and then councillors Chandler, Shada and Bremner were all, are all gravitating fairly strongly towards option A. Councillor Wolf, you had shown, I think, some support for option A, but I think you, you had some reservations about it. And of course councillor Wolbrook does. I have a little bit there. Councillor Wolf, maybe, do you have refined thoughts now?
Yeah, if I could try to clarify my rambling, my rambling thoughts. I, I guess the most important thing to me, and I, I realize this means we have to wait until March, but I want to know what kind of commitment the match board is willing to make toward this project. We've, we've, we've assigned them this important task. And if they come back and they say, look, you know, we only, we only have 75,000 that we want to, the voters to commit to per year for the next 15 years, or we only have, you know, I think we need to evaluate the situation once we hear from them before we can necessarily make commitments of other monies. And that's what I was trying to say.
Thank you.
I have some interest, if it turns out that we can't do the whole nine yards and we can't get the funds necessary because Match has other priorities or the voters voted down, then I would at least like to see the building be accessible because I'd like it to be used for something. It's so precious, I hate for it to become a storage building. But my, my preference is not just to make the entrance accessible or just to make the bathroom. That's just for me a, a minimum if we can't rehab the whole building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. One question, councillor Wolf, you're, I gather you're not really opposed to option A? That would be an acceptable course of action?
Yes, I'm sorry I'm being so wishy-washy. Yeah, no, I, I can live with option A.
I understand, there's a lot of details, there's, this isn't necessarily a simple, a simple problem. And, and we don't, I think it's fair to say we don't have all the answers tonight. It's a question, how are we going to work through this? Councillor Wolbrook, do you have, do you want to make some additional comments or?
I don't think so. I mean, I, I would lean more towards option two. I mean, that's, I think that that would be better for our ward to do that. And some of those things may happen naturally as we go through this process anyway. So one can hope for that. I hope what the task force committee hears from my ward tonight is you must, must, must involve us. You can't make assumptions about, you know, it's not okay to say, well, I think that other people will support it and we don't care if they don't. It's, you know, I just really want outreach to happen. That didn't really happen with us very well. We didn't have a good relationship during the match thing. I'd like to move beyond that. So I'm really pleading with this task force to really involve the people in my neighborhood, knock on doors. There's more than just the Avenue Hotel near the library, there's other places too. I mean, there's a lot of congestion, there's a lot going on in our neighborhood where that block is. We deal with, you know, residents, visitors, school, library, everything. And so I'm just asking the task force to say, be really, really super involved with my ward, particularly, you know, as it fans out around the library. That would be greatly appreciated by the people who are near the library. And I really hope to help you work towards that, along with PPLD as well. Thank you.
Councillor, councillor Wolf?
Yes, this is, I don't know if this is practical or not, I just had an idea pop in my head. I was just remembering about what they call the media room in the high school. And then I was trying to envision with my dusty memory cells what the library looks like in the elementary school, if there even is one, because I can't visualize where the heck it is right now. Anyway, my point is, if we do get in a crunch, maybe we could get for money. Maybe we could get creative and see if we could somehow partner with the school district to work with them. Because so many of the services provided at the library after 3:00 PM are for the students who have, you know, math tutors meet them in the little meeting rooms and reading tutors and group projects that have been assigned to them. And so I, I just didn't know if that was maybe another option for us to look at it down the road if, if we're in a pinch.
Thank you, good comments, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, I think that that's a really good idea. And the timing could not be more perfect to approach the school district since they are, I, I just went to a, a meeting with them last week on their facility strategic plan. So, yeah. Good idea, thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you. Councillor Chandler?
I just want to say one thing, having met with several entities interested in the library, including PPLD and Mr. Danan and Margaret and Linda Moreland and other, other neighbors. It's really interesting that, I, I just have to comment, there's been some comments tonight about, you know, we don't want this to take too long. And the comments I've been getting about people who've been vested in spending years and years and years of their time and talent is why is this taking so long? And, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of not reinventing the wheel. I really do understand what councillor Wolbrook is saying about her ward. We're dealing with some changes on Becker's Lane that have caused some of my neighbors to move away. I just lost two neighbors over, over some things that are changing and it's really hard. It's always easy to say, wow, I really want this when it's not in my neighborhood or my ward. So I really get this because we, we are dealing with this big time over on, on my end of the street. So I get that. But the bottom line is, having done some research on ADA compliance, I'm here to tell you that the footprint of the current library, if we were to make that completely ADA compliant, I do agree with Mr. Spears that it would not, it would cease to be functional as a library. And that's what we want to preserve. I'm not handicapped, I don't have handicapped family. I did have a very long conversation with the individual that filed the complaint and got his experience about not being able to enter our library. That was a real eye-opener for me. But I've been taking my granddaughter to that library since she was one year, year old. And I couldn't even get in the bathroom downstairs to help her go to the bathroom when she was being potty trained. So I felt like, wow, I can't even get in a bathroom to help my granddaughter who's being potty trained. So I understand what it's like to not be able to functionally use that library. And so i- if we want to make that a library, we need to commit to an expansion of some kind. And with the Thorpe expansion, that plan was engineered by someone with, with a background in library science. So I don't want to continue to kick this can down the road and reinvent, invent the wheel. I think that, that, I think the money's there. And I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I think the money's there for the Carnegie and the Hiawatha Gardens because this is what Manitou is all about. So call me Pollyanna, but I think that plan A is the most reasonable way to go in, in the, without wasting any more time and talent. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we're, we're pretty heavily weighted in favor of option A. And, and I would, I would favor option A also, subject to some, some points. I mean, clearly if, if the money can be raised in some reasonable amount of time, I think we would need to go back and, and reconsider what, what that would be. Maybe, maybe that's, you know, if we get to the middle of next year and, and it doesn't look like the plans are coming together, we'd, we'd want to rethink it. But, but my thought is that the task force goes forward and the city provides some level of appropriate support and try to make this happen. I, I would also ask that sooner rather than later, we have some financial plans or strategies to begin thinking about. Because if we need to go to an election next November and we want to nail things down, I know that's over a year away, but it seems like things sometimes happen fairly quickly. So if the, the committee would either take on or work with the city to resolve some of those additional questions that are sort of outside the fundraising scope, I could, I could see that, that this would be, I would be happy to go ahead with it. And I think whether I, whether I get that or not, I think there's, there's support from council to do this. Mr. Danan or Patty, if one, Mr. Danan, would you respond, please?
Yes, Patty may want to as well. Thank you for the considerations on all levels from all council members. I do respect where everybody is coming from, particularly for the constituents. And so I've, I've taken copious notes, I know Patty has as well. And I was going to address some of the things that were brought up by each council person. But you all in, in your ongoing back and forth conversations truly addressed some of the things that I was thinking, which in future planning with the city will, will come forward with our support. support in those areas. I do want to say, with due respect for everybody's opinion on council, excuse me, getting all choked up, that, like you said, Mayor, the leanings at this point are for option one. And that is something that has already been said many a time. That's where we've been going, not only over the last several months, but over the last several decades. So thank you for all your sincere considerations, even though the ones that don't line up with option one, we will work with you to address those. As Councilor Wilbrook said, of course, we will reach out to all members of the community, including Ward One. We have a subcommittee that will focus on that amongst other ways of doing community outreach, working with the city. We have a grant subcommittee ready to go. We are doing our homework on those areas, but we can't truly apply for any grants until we get a commitment by the city as to which direction they will go and with what plans. And then we are wanting to work and help in that capital campaign. Talking about capital funds, I do believe that there are also dedicated funds already within the city budget that Patty outlined briefly that we could attach to. So we're not starting from scratch in that regard. And I guess the last thing I'll say is, going back to Nancy's comments originally, is that we really do want to help. Yes, we're in, sometimes we're called an advocacy, advocacy group, because we're advocating for the preservation of the library. But we call ourselves officially a task force, because we want to take on tasks to make this happen. And we are there to, we are committed to make this thing happen. With your support, I believe we will. So thank you for your sincere considerations.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Patty, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Just a couple. I just want Councilor Wilbrook to know that I'm also one of her constituents. And I understand her concerns. This is not something that, that this task force has, has taken lightly. And there is a tremendous amount of experience on the task force, both in history, working on expansion and ADA compliance, but also just brainiacs in various ways that, you know, have a lot of experience and talent. And as Rob said, you know, we're, we're willing to work with the city staff and council in any way we can. But we have worked long and hard and, and do feel strongly that the solution needs to be in the, in the framework of option one. Doing ADA compliance without expansion just is not feasible. And I, and I wanted Councilor Wolf to know that when this process began in 2016, there were, I believe, and I think it's in Christine's memo, six or so, architecture firms that were, that were invited to participate. And Thorpe, by far, just has the right background, experience to do what, what needs to be done. I don't think there's any question that we need to, if option one is chosen or option A is chosen, that we need to bring it forward to 2020, 2021's, you know, costing and layout and all of that. This is not a done deal as it stands. Four years are almost gone by since this, well, four years have gone by since this process was last done. So we appreciate your time and just know that we're here to work with the city and staff in whatever way we can. But we're very strongly supportive of option one. Thank you.
Christine, do you have any comments relative to the city's position on this?
Other than what we've already discussed, not, not too much in depth, I think that it would be appropriate, if we're going to move forward with this, to meet, begin meeting in earnest. I would begin working with the group in earnest. We've already had a number of meetings as, in how to get to this meeting. And so I think there are, you know, there are some big, big steps ahead of us that we would need to do. And so I'd be ready to, to sort of jump out of the gate really fast. This is not the city's position, but I want to say something personally and address what Councilor Chandler brought up earlier. Councilor Chandler, you hit the nail on the head. For some of you who don't know, seven years ago, my daughter, during a bout of the flu, had an autoimmune thing triggered. And she has spent more than half of that time in a wheelchair. And so navigating a community, navigating something that we all take for granted is near and dear to me. So I'm super passionate about being a part of this. And, and I appreciate just the little bit that I've already been involved with it and taking it to the next step. So thank you.
We have any further comments on this subject? If not, thank you. Patty, Mr. Dan and Mr. Spears, thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Look forward to working with you in the future.
We'll, we'll see you in 45 days and you'll have all the answers then, I assume.
We wish.
And a check for $3 million.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, now we're down to the routine business of council correspondence. Anybody want to kick off? Does anybody have any, does anyone have anything? Mayor Protem?
Sure, really quickly. I was also at the match board meeting last week, and it happened to be Thursday night at 6 o'clock, and three of the members lived on Ruxton. So got a little bit of business done and ended up calling the meeting because folks were kind of stressed out, as one might imagine. But, but they continue to move along. And more to follow. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Councilor Wolf, I believe you had your hand up?
Oh, I had someone call and ask me, is it true that we're allowed, that the city is, is allowing free space in Hiawatha for food trucks now? And if so, where's the application process? And I said, I don't know. I have no idea. But is there, do we, do we have a policy on food, food trucks? And is it true that we're allowing space in Hiawatha for trucks to set up business? Is anybody, I don't know anything about it.
There is, we, we do have food truck policy and it is, it will be going to Planning Commission. I can't remember what date, but yes, it is on the Planning Commission thing, if I remember correctly.
What's on the Planning Commission?
The food truck in Hiawatha. So.
Oh, for one food truck?
For one food truck. So you can go to the Planning Commission and look at it. I really can't talk about it much here because of quasi judicial and those, those things. So you can go to the Commission and look at it. And then I can, I can see what update I can provide everybody. But quasi judicial, I've got to be careful with that information.
Oh, yes. And just to clarify, I was not approached by anyone who has a pending CUP. I was approached by someone who said, I heard there's free space being given out at Hiawatha for food trucks. Is that true? And I said, I don't know anything about it. So, and I don't want to ask you to speak to anything that would be quasi judicial. I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't even know that was, that wasn't what my call was about. But that was it. Oh, and Susan's raising her hand.
Well, I have, I, I mean, there is an ordinance about mobile vending that would prohibit anyone just doing that, I think, if I understand the ordinance correctly. And then I would just speak on behalf of our local restaurants, that I don't want this to get out, that, you know, I just want to be careful about the messaging on this. Because if I were a local restaurant and I were struggling and there's an ordinance on the books about mobile vending that prohibits that under, unless you can adhere to certain conditions, like you already are doing it in front of your business or something like that. I just want us to be clear on that tonight. As we talk.
Yeah, that was the kind of answer the person was looking for, but I didn't, I said, I'm not familiar with any of that. But the part, I knew we had an ordinance. I wasn't sure what it said. And I also knew you have to get a conditional use permit. But I was really surprised to hear that the city is giving out free space in a city parking lot. I said, that would be odd, because I, then everybody has to get a free space. We can't give preferential treatment to certain places. But beyond that, I said, I just said, you need to talk to the city administrator, because it's over my head. I have no idea. And that's it, other than the email I mentioned earlier that I got today, that I haven't even opened yet from Gerhart, where it sounded like, and I'm sorry to forget his last name, Sloken or something. And he sent me some architectural designs about the library. I don't know if there are variations on the Thorpe design or what, because I haven't even had a chance to open it yet or to reply to him. And I believe that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilor Wolf.
And I will just say, I will give an update on the, I can't get into the Planning Commission agenda item. For some reason, it's telling me I don't have access. So I would ask all of you to look at that. And then I'll try to give an update with what I can tomorrow on this. I just don't have all that readily available. So I'll get it to you with what I can.
Thank you. And Councilor Wilbrook, I guess we'll do you next.
Okay. I just want to reference an email that we all got from Pat Sitzman about Becker's Lane. And I, I just, you know, maybe we could give an email about who's responding to that. Because I don't exactly know how to respond to that one. So I just would reference that. And then if you haven't been on C Click Fix, that's really council correspondence of sorts. You, you know, get on it. It's, you know, it's really, really neat. It also is really overwhelming, because it's a great way for citizens to communicate things. But I also feel for staff, having all these things popping in all the time. So it's just, I think we just need to make sure we're patient with it, because I have anxiety every time one comes in. And I can't imagine how staff feels about it, although I know they're working on it and that's great. But C Click Fix, you can do it on your computer if you don't want to do it on your phone. And that's how I do it, because I need the bigger screen so I can see it. But it's, it's easy to do on, on your computer if you want to do that. And I just want to, you know, shout out to the public, use that. It's really been effective for several people who have used it in my neighborhood. But again, it's unrolling and it needs probably some patience with it as well.
Great. Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Bremner, I believe you were next?
Yeah, I, getting back to the fire in comments from people that live in Manitou Springs. I was up there right when the fire started and I took some video and I took some pictures. I posted them on Facebook and I got quite a few comments from people, residents of Manitou Springs. And they aligned with, with what I said earlier, that we have to do something about this. We can't just allow this to fester and wait for the next fire to start, because the next fire could be the one that consumes our village, where we're situated. So I think it's, you know, that's, that's just what I got, comments from people that live around Manitou Springs, pretty much like what I'd said.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Shada?
Yes, I guess the comment I'd like to make about C Click Fix is several things. People who are using that app, I think they need to be really careful about making sure that the pictures they share with the app and then the address are accurate. I spent some time this afternoon, probably similar to Susan, looking at C Click Fix, you know, on a computer screen. And so I think the more accurate you are where they, where you're seeing the problem is really good. The second thing, I guess, I'd like to say that I think from the standpoint of having written kind of customer facing systems like this, is that I think the city staff ought to look at where the trends are. In other words, if we're getting a whole bunch of complaints about, oh, I don't know, a certain kind of a thing in a certain area or whatever, it seems like to me, you know, that's an action item where I think city staff can kind of take some proactive, you know, things so that basically they don't get overwhelmed with all these kinds of clicks. As an example of that, it seems like there's an inordinate amount of bear activity on Lover's Lane. And it seems like there's almost a post every single day. So I think that's a case in point there, where, you know, we, we just really need to get a hold of that situation with those trash containers back there. Or otherwise, it is going to be, you know, you know, a posting every single day, because there's trash every single day back there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shada. Councilor Chandler? I don't think we've heard from you, Don.
Oh, let's see, where to start? So first of all, again, kudos to the first responders and staff. Can't say enough about you keeping us safe in this city. Met with Reverend Susie Marin at her request with Administrator Howell and Michelle Anthony briefly last week to discuss some of the homeless issues. So we are, I do hear you, Councilor Bremner. It's such a multifactorial issues and some of the ways we might be able to work with our regional partners on these issues and how the Beehive might be a player. Speaking of the Beehive, we are meeting with Aspen Point tomorrow to look at what is going well and what we can improve already with their input. Tessa is coming on board. They will be here one day a week, starting in a few weeks on Fridays, full days. When people ask us how we're doing with setting up the Beehive, I just remind everybody, we're still in the first trimester. And just, we, we've had a lot of calls and a lot of interest, but you know, we're still, we're still taking baby steps. So hang in there with us. I was in a meeting today, addressing some issues regarding Becker's Lane. And I just want to say, it was my first opportunity to meet our new code enforcement officer, Cindy, and so impressed with her. Welcome aboard. What a spitfire. She's going to be fantastic and look forward to working with her. And I think that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you, Councilor. I guess I am not living a very exciting life. I didn't, I don't have much to report. I would like to thank city administration Denise and Roy and Alex for being at the, at the scene of the fire and supporting the fire and the police effort there and coordinating things. I think, as was said earlier, it was a good learning experience. And actually, I think it was a good demonstration of the cohesiveness that we have. So my appreciation for, for, for you getting us through that. And if you'll pass word down the ranks as appropriate, please do so. Okay, great. Let's move on. Julie, you have a follow on question?
Question, Mayor?
Yeah.
This is a, a follow up to, somebody asked, and I forget who, about Pat Sitzman's email begging, oh, Susan, thank you, Susan, begging for some response to the problems on Becker Lane. And I have to confess, I'm very ignorant about those problems. But would you, Mayor, be responding to that email, since you do all the emails? I just didn't see a response. I just didn't want her to be ignored.
Well, I'm sorry. Good point. That, that's an excellent point. And I meant to mention, I believe Denise spent two hours with Pat Sitzman yesterday. So Denise, could you bring us up to date there as appropriate?
Yeah, I spoke on the phone yesterday for about an hour and a half when we talked. And then we met today to really talk about Becker's Lane and how we move forward. So we're putting in, we're putting together a plan of what that looks like and how we're doing some additional research. And then I'll be getting back with Patsy. Patsy and I talked about some different options. And she had some great suggestions. So we're looking at it from a staff perspective. Councilor Shama was a part of that. So we're moving forward. And yeah, I did spend about an hour and a half with Patsy yesterday.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And now if we could go on to the city administrators' report?
Yep, just an update. The street tree trimming continues. They did El Paso and Serpentine and they're continuing phases with that. The paving's done on Manitou Avenue and they're starting to stripe. Should be done in a day or two. And then a good point from Mr. Shada on C Click Fix, what we've been doing or trying to encourage people to do is take a picture of the street sign as well. So if you take a picture of a pothole or something, get a nearby street sign on the, in a picture and send it. So if you take a picture of a pothole or something, get a nearby street sign on, and a picture and send it as well. And then we have an idea where it's at and can find it. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Oh, may I ask Mr. Chaney a question?
Yes, ma'am.
About the street, about the streets striping, that's hard to say, street striping. I can't remember exactly, but it used to be that our crosswalks looked so new age that you didn't know they were crosswalks. They didn't have like the normal crosswalk line. It was like, it almost looked like stripes or something. Is, are we going to have like normal crosswalks so people realize it's a crosswalk? Because it used to be not so good, even though I forget what it looked like. It was confusing.
They were really faded, but I, they're going to put down the crosswalk design that's recommended by C dot. And then they're also going to sprinkle a reflective flake on there so that at night you can see it. So hopefully it's more visible. And I hope that's what you're talking about.
And will there still be a crosswalk that goes right into the center of the roundabout at Roxton?
All the crosswalks.
In front of the Armadillo?
Yes, there should be crosswalks in the same locations that were there before. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Denise?
Also with the crosswalk, I will tell you, I've used the flag down here at El Paso and Manitou. And it's a great safety issue. They stop. So I know we're looking at doing that on some additional crosswalks to get people's attention as you go across. So I do want to say, I walked downtown today, stopped in on several businesses, just asked how they were doing and what did they think of the paving? And they were so appreciative. They said it just looks night and day different. Again, I want to shout out to Jeff for finding the money and really thinking outside the box to find that money. Because if we were going to wait for C dot, it was going to be several more years, if not longer, to get it done. And Jeff really worked with our partner agencies to get that done. So shout out to him. We will get those answers to the budget questions. I spoke with Becca today. She's still working on that brief for the audit. And by Thursday afternoon, evening, we will have all those answers that we have received at this time. So we're working on that. I also want to shout out to all the fire and to all of staff. I mean, we had fire, we ended up with a, a power outage, we were striping, we were doing, I mean, it was just like a day with everything happening. And staffs just stayed on focus and they did a phenomenal job, every single one of them. And really worked together and collaborative. So a shout out to all of staff as we work through the last week, which we've had some opportunities. 202 Becker's, we are working on that. We're working on the whole area of how do we look at managing this holistically and not just this one issue, but as a city. So we'll be bringing some ideas to city council in the near future and having you look at it as a policy perspective. So staff is now working on that and pulling some information together. And then we'll bring it to council for your, to make set a policy and what policy you would like to set. We're looking at broadband. We'll be bringing that to council also in the near future of where we are with broadband and another policy issue. So that will be something that we'll be bringing. And then the ballot box, I do want to announce, it did state in the bulletin that it doesn't open until the end of October, the ballot box, the drop box out here in front of City Hall is open. Anybody can drop their ballot. So please, you know, vote, vote, vote. That's the message. I encourage everybody to vote and it is there. I know yesterday, I was there when Mr. Bremner dropped his off. And just want to thank everybody for talking. And I spent, what, two hours, three hours with Mr. Bremner yesterday, really talking about the homeless and how we can look at it and big picture and all of that. So appreciate your support as we work through these things. And then again, I do want to shout out to staff how they managed it in Chief Forsette and the, the fire department and all of our partners. Because without our partners, we would have not been able to manage that fire. And it was truly a collaborative effort with every single person, you know, monument, bringing police over, CSU giving us water, and it goes on and on and on. So it was truly a collaborative effort. So I just want to shout out to all of our partners throughout.
Thank you, Denise. And, and actually Denise's mentioning the vote, vote, vote reminded me of something I wanted to run past council. Our meeting on, of course, we're scheduled to have a regular meeting on November the 3rd. That's election night. So I wanted to see, we've got several options. We can, we could go ahead and have the meeting that night. We could move it potentially. We could, we only have two items right now. We could move those, postpone them. I don't know, they're terribly critical. One is a request by Sun Water Spa that's probably wouldn't, it's not contentious. That could probably be done pretty quickly. Conceivably, if we had a special meeting during the October 27th work session, we could resolve it and be done with that. The, the other issue I think is a land use thing with Eddie Bishop. We've got a couple of things there. Denise, you have probably more insight?
Don't do a special session during the work session. I think you'll set a precedent if you do that. I think it's either looking at November, maybe 2nd or 3rd. You could move up the meeting to 4 o'clock, which I know is what happened last year, and try to get through it. Or look at the 4th, 5th or 6th and move the meeting on that time if you wanted to change it on the, the voting night.
And so I, I do know that on Monday night, Parib has a meeting at 6 o'clock. Mayor Pretend Fortune typically, you know, goes to those. We might consider having it Monday night, moving it, starting at 5 o'clock to accommodate her need to get to the Parib meeting. Think Wednesday, the HPC meets at 6:00 PM. I don't know that that's a conflict for any of us. Thursday, November the 5th, I don't think there are any conflicts. And, and not on Friday either, if any of those dates would work. We've got three weeks before we get there. We need to announce something to the public if we're going to shift the, the meeting. But we can either discuss it now or you can think about it and we could probably, you could email me and let me know what your druthers are. Looks like the intent here is to think about it.
What are your druthers?
Mayor, I would say I think we do need to set this date because there's, it's a, it's a hearing. And so you've got to post it in a certain amount of time. So if we could try to get the date set, it allows us to make sure that we made, we meet all the deadlines.
Mayor Protem?
My preference would be to just have, by understanding it's good, in all likelihood, it'll be a fairly short meeting. I would like to just continue to have it on the 3rd.
Mr. Bremner?
I vote for the 3rd as well, regular time.
Just 3rd regular time? Do we have anyone who's opposed to the 3rd of the regular time? We'll try to keep it short.
Yeah. I prefer to, I'm sorry, Counsel, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Counsel Wilbrook and then Counsel Chandler.
Well, I mean, I think if we can keep the agenda where it is now, I'm for that. If we start filing things onto that agenda, that would defeat the purpose. I, I just brought this up because I think a lot of people are politically active in Manitou and they probably want to be with whatever campaign they've been working on. There's lots of local campaigns that people work on in Manitou. So if we can, if we can keep the agenda at two items, I think it's great to have it on the 3rd at 6 and try to set a goal of being out by 7. But if, if we start, if we don't respect that, then I'd, I'd vote for Thursday, just FYI.
Thank you. Counsel Chandler?
What Counselor Wilbrook said, I, I was, I was thinking either moving it up to 5 on Tuesday or, or move it to Thursday would be my A and B. And, and, and not adding anything else to the agenda.
Well, it, it sounds like the comments we just had that the majority of council members would like to stick with the, the November 3rd time and start at the regular, regular time. It's not what you're proposing, Counsel Chandler, but we could see.
I, I can join my watch party the moment the meeting ends.
We'll try to make it short then, I think. Denise?
Just something to consider. It will, both of them are public hearings and they have land use. And so if you do it on Tuesday and it's election, then the general public may not be coming as much as they normally would. So I just want to put that out there. If we were to move it, we, I just got an email from Planning. They would prefer to move up to Thursday because, to make sure all of staff could be there. So I just want to put that out there for you guys' consideration.
And I have an obligation on Thursday, so I would prefer it not be on Thursday.
Counsel Wolf?
Oh, I just wondered, I, I assume that Sun Water Spa, no one else has already incurred expense in terms of publishing this yet. That's not done till more last minute. Am I remembering that right? In other words, we're not inconveniencing any of those folks if we move the time or the day?
No, I don't think, I think the sooner you can do it, the better, you know, changing it, moving it for two weeks past that. So if you don't do it the 3rd, you're looking at November 17th and that's a, quite a big delay. So, you know, and again, you could make it a special meeting, but then you're making a special meeting. And I think you could say you're making a special meeting because of election, not just because they're requesting it. Because you don't want to set a precedent for that.
What about Wednesday? Is Wednesday an option for council?
I just got an email from, from Planning that Wednesday is not because it's HPC and we need Michelle to be a part of this and she's part of the HPC.
Thank you.
I guess I gravitate to leaving it where it's, where it's at, November the 3rd at 6 o'clock. There was support for that a few minutes ago. We've gotten some fresh information. Who would oppose meeting at, at the normal time on, on the 3rd at 6 o'clock? And just, we just keep the agenda to two items. Again, those are public hearings, so there's, there's that consideration. Would anyone, is anyone strongly opposed to that? Counsel Wilbrook, you are okay? Anything else? Okay.
I, I, I'd rather not, but I mean, I'll, I'll be there. I'll be present if that's the vote.
May I all be a little mentally ill that night? We may not be at our best. We may be stressed out. But I don't mind either way. I, you know, I, 6 o'clock is fine. If it's easier for folks to start earlier, I guess we should, we could see if there's consensus to start a little earlier, if that helps. Anything is fine with me.
How many would, would, who all would favor starting earlier on the 3rd? I mean, okay, so we had on the 3rd, we could start earlier. Okay, looks like we've got five votes there. Julie, you're six, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
I know, it's, it's, you know, it's like, we'll take three hours to discuss what we're going to do for a one-hour meeting if we're not careful. Okay, so how about we start at 5 o'clock on, on November the 3rd? And then, okay, and we'll, we'll try, we'll keep it to, to the two items. Okay. All right. And we'll, we'll try to get some advance notice out so the people know about that. Okay, great. Well, thanks for indulging me on that last minute thought. So I think that finishes it. We don't need a motion to adjourn. We'll just say goodnight. Take care. Thank you all.
Good night. Thank you.